We'll call this morning's meeting to order for December 29th. The first thing is the approval of the agenda. Motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Have any citizens to be heard that want to be speaking?
No, Mr. Chair, no. Haven't heard from any citizens.
Just a reminder, your mics may be turned off. I don't know if you got them on or not. Thank you. Approval of the bills?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Jim, second by Jenny to approve the bills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with the minutes from December the 8th.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Grant, I think, or Jim, uh, who? Grant, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we'll go into our weekly update of COVID-19 with Kathy. You're all by yourself today, huh?
I lost my team.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I handed out the numbers that we do weekly. And as you can see, the positive cases as of the 28th were 6,123 for Clay County. We're at 77 deaths. Our 14-day case rate per 10,000 has been slowly going down, so we're now under 100. So that's good. Positive cases in Minnesota, 410,000, 13 newly reported deaths, so they're at 5,160 deaths across the state. And then, of course, the hospitalizations are there, 21,420 in Minnesota, and ICU, 4,539 throughout the hospitals in Minnesota. The numbers for Sanford and Essentia, I mentioned last week, were, they were manageable as far as numbers of patients in ICU and hospitalizations. They're not seeing a huge spike in those. They're seeing more cases in the emergency rooms, but not necessarily COVID cases. So that number, at least in our area, is not problematic. The second page, we're seeing, and this is as of December 23rd, so that's why there's a little bit difference in the positive cases, but from December 16th through to December 23rd, you see that the positive cases are not, you know, they're really not going up like they have been. So we're seeing really much less number of total cases. So that's really been good to see in our area. We're not seeing the big surge of cases that some of the other parts of the country we're seeing after Thanksgiving. And of course, we'll see now if we see any big surges after Christmas and New Year's, after the two holidays. We're hoping not, because we're thinking people are very diligent about following the measures. So that's really been great to see. Let me see if there's anything else about the cases. I can go on to, we have the, on page three and four, we have the cases of, again, the age ranges of the cumulative cases, and then the age ranges of the active cases, which, you know, isn't really surprising. The active cases, though, as of the 28th, you know, the big age range is the 20 to 24, and the 35 to 39 are kind of leading the pack there. And then we're seeing cases in the 40 to 49 range also for active cases. So it's across the, a little bit of the age spectrum there. I can go on to talk about our vaccine data. You see that there's vaccine distributed to Minnesota, so the total vaccine doses, 174,750 so far, to vaccine providers allocated from CDC to Minnesota. And then so far, the number of vaccines that have been administered across the state, and this will change daily as vaccine gets out, but it's a little under 3,000 there that the COVID vaccines have been administered. Now, we're going by phases, so the federal and state health organizations have given us phases to go through. So as we provide vaccine, and you see in Clay County, there's been 143 so far that have received vaccine. Now, that would be through the healthcare system. We received some vaccine, and our priority areas, and I mentioned this last week, will be those that are vaccinating. So my nurses that will be providing the vaccination need to get the vaccine first, and then also the COVID testers, and that is that semi-permanent vault saliva testing site. We need to get those individuals vaccinated, so they are in our top priority. Those are the first ones that will get vaccinated, and we're already in communication with getting those to those individuals. And then, of course, our EMS folks across the county. We have, I believe, about 300 that will need to get vaccinated through the EMS. So those are first, it's phase one, and it's the first priority in phase one. So those are the three that public health will be vaccinating. So we'll be, we'll be setting those up. We're getting another shipment in sometime this week, so we'll have enough to cover those EMS folks. And again, it's not mandatory, it's optional, so people can still say they don't want it in those priority areas. The nurses that are going to be vaccinating, they can refuse to take it if they want. We aren't mandating this vaccine, as well as the testers. We're hoping everybody will, will take the vaccine, but again, we're offering it. So we'll see. So it's the testers, the vaccinators, and then the EMS folks. The hospitals are doing their, all their folks, and when the, when they do the clinics, they'll be doing those as well. So their healthcare systems, our long-term care facilities will be, the vaccine will be provided by the pharmacies that signed up to be providers. And so there's a number of other assisted living and other facilities that we are reaching out to that may have not connected with a pharmacy to get the vaccines. One of the long-term care facilities actually was authorized as a provider, and you maybe saw on the news that they're, they're providing their own vaccine to their individuals. But most of the long-term care facilities are going through the pharmacies that have signed up to be providers.
The EMS people, do they have to come in to get it, or you go out to the different places?
We're going to work with them to see, we'll probably do a combination. So those that can come in, it would be great. And then if we need to go out to folks, we'll do that. We'll make sure we accommodate, and even schedules. We'll need to accommodate schedules as well. We're going to try to do the vaccines at least three times a week throughout the day, but we'll also accommodate after hours if they need that. We just need to get the vaccine out to them. So my nurses are ready to do whatever we need to. We have the appropriate coolers that we can provide the, we can bring the vaccine out. It'll maintain its temperature. There were special coolers for this Moderna vaccine. The one thing about this vaccine, they come in vials of 10, and in other vaccines, you can, you know, take a few doses out of a vial, and you can maintain that vial for the next time you do vaccines. With this COVID vaccine, we cannot do that. So if we take two doses out of a vial, we need to use up the other eight doses. You cannot carry it over till the next day. So that's going to be a little bit, kind of managing those doses, because the, the big thing is, we absolutely don't want to waste any doses, and we want to make sure we get it to the people. So, and try to maintain the priority areas. Minnesota Department of Health is pretty diligent about, until you get through that first priority, they don't want us to move to the second priority. So, but we're going to do what we can without losing vaccine. That's our priority, not to make sure we waste any.
Kathy? I have had several conversations with some school district members, and in terms of getting kids back to school, which I think is a big priority for not only the governor, but I think families as well, it seems that it would be wise to add teachers to that priority level because of the fact that before they were having trouble with teachers either getting it or being in quarantine, and so it was hard to get substitutes and so on and so forth. Where are teachers on the priority list?
Well, and thank you for that question, Commissioner Mojo. We had conversations as well with superintendents that requested that. The teachers are not in, so the first priority of 1A is those that I just mentioned. Second priority, we're still meeting needs for like dialysis centers, urgent care centers, and other healthcare facilities that haven't been met under priority A. And then priority, the third priority under phase A is, again, pharmacies, mental health, behavioral health, correctional health, group homes. So teachers aren't in that first three priorities of phase one. But we certainly, we understand that need. We've talked with them about that. They may be in the next priority after the third. I don't have the information about what will be next after this first phase, but I, I would hope we can get to them soon after that. We have to go, the phases are, are again, made up by CDC and MDH, so we're not able to make those changes in, in who we think needs the vaccine, but we, we really understand that need. So we'll work with MDH on that. We've expressed it to MDH that our schools are, are asking for that. So maybe they'll hear us and make some changes about when we can get that out. Again, we're getting such small amounts through public health, and it may increase as we go along. So we're just working with kind of small numbers of allocations right now, but we certainly understand the need. And they really have phased where there's really high priorities of those that are at most risk for getting COVID and/or being hospitalized or in ICU. So yeah, appreciate that, that concern, though. Any questions on the vaccine distribution? There's been a lot of training for even nurses that have to provide the vaccine. They just, there's been a tremendous amount of modules that we had to work through. We have, we also had a system that luckily enough, we were able to secure in preparation for this, a system where we have to enter everything within 24 hours and get it uploaded. We purchased that through our CARES money. And then the Minnesota Department of Health came out with a system that we could use across, across Minnesota. Unfortunately, there's been some glitches in their system, so we're not able to use that system. So we're very fortunate to have the system we have that we can, we can use. So we're not going to use that Minnesota system because it's not available. So we'll be, as we start our vaccines, we'll be using the system we have purchased, and the nurses have all been trained on that as well. So lots of training happened to get prepared for providing this new vaccine. The COVID testing site has, we've seen a decrease in the number of people getting tested the week of December 20th, and we suspect, you know, there's students that are gone and other folks. So it was 2,800 the week of December 20th that, that were tested. But we expect that to ramp up as higher ed comes back. They'd like to utilize the testing site, and so would some of the folks through K-12. So we'll, I'm expecting we'll get, there'll be some ramp up in numbers of people tested.
I was just going to ask if you have any idea how long that testing site will stay. I know there was some discussion early about it only lasting until the middle of December. Is it still a case, a week-by-week type situation?
Right. Minnesota, I asked the question, Minnesota Department of Health does not have a, a specific date where they think they'll close down, but, but right now, they're functioning, and they, it looks like they plan to function for, we hope, a couple months, but they're, they're not, they're not sure, depending on, you know, it's, it's, they utilized funding to keep them operational, and then, of course, if they can bill insurance companies, they're getting more revenue to do that testing as well. So we haven't heard anything about them closing across Minnesota, so that's great. We've heard a lot of good reports about the testing site, and in fact, some of the schools, they can order the testing sites to be mailed. They prefer to go to the saliva testing site, the majority of them. So it's going to be utilized quite a bit, we think, in the next month. So no word on any specific date that they may close. So we're hopeful that they'll stay open for a while.
Which is the next closest site that DeMorehead, we're testing?
Well, Fargo has a testing site, actually, it's located in West Fargo, and that's a swab test Monday through Friday, and then, of course, testing through the healthcare systems as well. And then Minnesota has the ability to order those home test kits.
If you live in Detroit Lakes, would you get tests to come to Fargo, I mean Fargo-Moorhead for that?
They might come to our saliva testing site, or they would do the home test, or they'd, they'd test through their healthcare systems there. Other questions that you may have about numbers, testing, vaccine?
Very good, Kathy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Coming down.
Thank you.
I guess you're on the next thing, too, huh, for call a special meeting with Community Health Board to discuss potential adjustment of 2021 licensing fees.
Well, I, I might kind of lead this off here as you.
Excuse me, Commissioner Mojo, I'd like Kent Severson. He is our director of this whole program for the four counties, so I've asked him to come. He's the one with all the answers, so.
Perfect. Well, as you all know, our CARES Act committee reconvened last week to start discussing mitigation with some of the funds that were allocated at the state level, and Commissioner Campbell and I had, have really had a lot of phone calls from restaurants that are really feeling the pinch, as you are as well, I would guess. And in seeing what some other counties and cities are doing to help mitigate some of the challenges as these facilities are under an executive order to not be open physically, we're just trying to see whatever we could do to help ease the strain of their business structure right now. And certainly, if a company is trying to keep people on payroll and trying to pay their, their rent for their facility, the last thing that we as a county want to do is impose a hardship for getting a licensure or a renewal done in a, a short amount of time right now. So Kathy will explain that this isn't something that just the Clay County Board can do today. It's something that we need to request of a different board, since we are a member of a multi-county board with that, but go for it.
Yeah, before, I just want to add to that, and, and I understand, you know, we understand the fact that, that these license fees are due the end of this month, and a lot of them have already paid it. It's really unfortunate that, you know, it's a, it's a calendar fee, basically, to, you know, to have that license, and yet we're restricting them from not being able to, to be open. And so certainly, I, I would be a proponent of at least proportionately refunding them for however, you know, if this, for example, if they're, if they're closed one month, that'd be, 1/12 of their fees should be returned, you know. I, I think there's, there has to be some sort of relief like that, and we understand that that's the four-member county deal, right? That's what we're, that, that board that governs that.
It's the Community Health Board, and Commissioner Gross is the commissioner from our group that serves on that community health board.
Yeah, but, but I think that's kind of where Commissioner Mojo and I were coming from, from the CARES committee standpoint, that, and we understand that some of them have already paid, but I still think that we should, and I, I don't know, I think the, the governor right now, I think, I think right now it's closed through the 10th or something, but who knows what it's going to be next.
13th, I believe.
13th? Yeah, so, you know, so we'd be looking at, as far as I'm concerned, giving them at least a month's credit.
Maybe Kent, I wonder if you, you received the, you know, the total numbers of their non-seasonal. It's Clay, Clay and Moorhead, you know, we do all of those, of course. We also provide Wilkins, so Kent and Becky is the other individual that works in this area, provide the inspections, and we do the licensing for Wilken. They don't have their own individuals, and maybe once in a while, someone from Otter Tail. Otter Tail has their own team that provide all the services in Otter Tail. So really, it's, it's our Clay folks and then our Otter Tail folks that have the licensed individuals that work on this. And Kent is in charge of the whole program for all of those counties. He's the program manager. This is a delegated agreement from Minnesota Department of Health, and they delegate it down to, to local public health, whoever wants to serve the jurisdictions. And many years ago, this board and others decided that it makes sense to do local. We have Kent and his team have relationships with all of the providers, and it just makes sense. Some, some other counties just use the state, but we feel like it's more effective, it's more efficient, the providers or the operators seem to appreciate a local inspection. So I don't know if, the variety of fees are different based on the establishments, so I don't know, Kent, if you want to give them a sample of what, what a particular establish might pay for, for fees. These are totals that you've received, that Steve handed out, total revenues from those fees that we receive?
Good morning. Like Kathy had mentioned, we are a four-county CHB, with one of the counties still relying on the state Minnesota Department of Health for their food inspections and licensing, which is Becker. So between Clay, Wilken, and the city of Moorhead here, we have, most of the numbers on this are referring to that, and then Otter Tail's on there as well. One thing that's neither here nor there, but maybe kind of an interesting part of this conversation would be the degree of seasonals in Otter Tail versus Clay and Wilken here, where it's quite a jump to that industry in that county as opposed to our other two here. Again, no real reason to talk about that at now, just something to bring light to as discussions happen. You know, in a typical food and beverage license, if they were a, a small unit, they're probably going to get by for about $295 for the year, for the license fees. We do have some, some of the larger hotels that might have a food license, they might have a swimming pool license, lodging license, and all those. Some of those can get to be about three grand or so, somewhere around that area, and then if you factor in some alcohol licensing as well. So we got quite a range for each, you know, that can be kind of all over the board, and I need a little bit better mask, I think.
You can turn it on.
You can remove that mask.
Yeah, you can.
You're over 60 people, so.
So yeah, just to bring a little light to the differences in some of the landscape there as things go forward. And as Kathy mentioned, too, we need to function as a CHB, so obviously, anything that one board would decide, we have to kind of come to that agreement on the CHB, which is, you know, why we're looking to get a meeting going and discuss this and come up with some options for relief.
Would we, though? I mean, we as, we as a county can elect to refund whatever we want, right? Wouldn't we, I mean?
I guess that was going to be my question, too. I mean, I realize we got the four-county thing, but wouldn't we just have authority over Clay County? Can we tell the other counties what to do? Or is the PA, in the partnership, can you do that?
Well, that part would come from the CHB, because that's our delegated agreement, is to work as that community health board. If there was anything that we would, as a colony, want to do for ourselves, it would have to be somehow not tied to our delegation agreement, which would be a little difficult to get to.
Well, I guess, I want to dive into this a little bit, because it seems to me that, so, so down here, this, this 28,000, that quarterly number, is that, is that a, for example, if we were to give out one quarter, or return one quarter of fees, is that, Steve, is that what this is? That's, that 20? So, so my point being is if, if, if Clay County wants to send back 1/4 of an annual license fee, we don't have to call it that, but we could, we could, as a county, we could say, we're, we're reimbursing you for an investment that didn't do you any good while you were closed. You know, so, you know, so I'm really wondering whether we would even have to go to this board in the first place, and I'm going to, going to just throw this out there. For example, we got, you know, we got the $1.28 million that we're going to be dealing with, with CARES. In addition to that, we got some administrative money that was 30, over $30,000. I still want that to go back to businesses, too, not, I don't want to pay for administration. We're doing that anyway. You know, so, so we, you know, that, just that number right there could, could cover one quarter of, and I, you know, I said, you know, we talked about for the year 2021, you know, that, that, you know, I mentioned 1/12, but, but there's no reason, then, that if we do it in the way that I'm talking about now, we could reimburse them for any three months. So we could actually be saying, we're reimbursing you for being closed for November, December, and January, and you could still come up with that and take those monies in that regard, and not even go through, I don't know, I, I think that's, it's, it still qualifies under, under what we use those CARES dollars for. So it seems to me that we have all sorts of options without counting on somebody else having to do the same thing that we do.
Well, and I think that's a really good point. If we were to the point where the, the community health board said, we're absolutely against this, then we need to figure some, something out to help Clay County. In the discussions that I think our administrators had with the other counties is they're completely open to discussing exactly what we're talking about. So I think that, that maybe is the avenue that maybe would be the cleanest, is to work with the community health board, and then if we get in a position where they're not willing to work, surely we can do whatever we, we, we can do whatever we need to for Clay County businesses. And I think that's what, what Kevin's saying, is we shouldn't have to sit as a crutch and wait for a board to act on our behalf as well.
The, the concern that I have there is, you know, the community health board, they probably, they're going to be looking at their budgets and wondering, okay, well, if, if we don't, if we return, you know, 28,000, just what Clay County would do, but if the other counties all did it and, and Otter Tail did it, that number would be significantly higher. And what does that do to the community health board's annual, because they don't get the, you know, they, might they look for, for us for different revenues to make that up, then? I, I don't, I don't know.
Commissioner Campbell and Mr. Chair, those, the fees support the program, so if we reduce fees, they have to be, so the county would have to put the money in there.
They have to make it up.
And so if you eliminate the support, if you don't go through fees, but want to provide support to those businesses based on this amount, then that would be separate from the fees. But what we've, what the community health board determined was what would the fees be, and they voted on that, so it's consistent, because we're one delegated agreement. The community health board doesn't hold any funds. All those funds go to the counties. They just go through the community health board. So any, any fee reduction would have to be put back into the program.
Right, because, because those fees are determined based on the time spent with inspections and everything else that goes on. It's, it's just to recover the costs associated with the administration of these license fees, right? Isn't that, in essence, how they determine those, what those fees are? So, so I think the community health board, I, I don't know that they got a pot of money that they can have in reserves, you know, that will make up, for example, if, if the community health board sent that $28,000 back to our businesses.
Commissioner Campbell, the community health board doesn't hold any money.
Right.
The money that we get through the community health board is funding, this is how the structure is made up in Minnesota for public health. So the funding that comes through the community health board, which is, this is one of the programs, it's across the counties, that funding goes to the counties. The community health board itself doesn't hold any funding. So, so all of the fees go to, so, and for instance, Otter Tail gets all of their fees to support their staff that, so there is no money in the community health board?
Because if they didn't have those license fees from those people, it would end up on a tax levy, wouldn't it?
Yeah, the.
Because, because we're still, we still have to pay for the services.
That's correct. We pay for the services, which is, you know, we're either.
We as a county, I say.
Yeah, the the fees make up the the amount that we have to support the program. That is correct.
That's why, that's why I say if 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 we're if we're paying it anyway, you know, I I mean, I quite frankly, I don't care what the community health board feels about this. I I if they want to be involved, it's still going to come back to each county is going to have to be responsible for making up those dollars anyway. If the community health board even decided that it was the right thing to do, then you would call it a return on, or it would be a reduction in the license fee. And I'm saying, we can call it whatever we want to call it.
But if we do, Commissioner Campbell, if we do, if we do state it as affecting the license fees, then it is a community health board because those fees were already adopted and agreed upon. So any reduction in fees would have to be agreed upon because it has to be consistent. So somehow.
So then the question the community health board would be just to allow counties to.
We're not reducing fees. We're just looking at possibly looking at returning.
That's right.
A proportion of the money that they paid in fees.
That's right.
We're just going to look at their fees. Well, they paid 100 dollars. We'll give them 100 dollars, just cares act money back.
Well.
It's nothing to do with the fees.
For at least, you know, and I I think we can easily justify the fact that they've been closed for close to three months at least, you know.
I think it'd be a good guiding tool to look at the fees, how much they paid and pay accordingly.
I mean, any, this goes back to the when we had some of these owners here, was it last week, talking to us? You know, any little bit of relief in any way we can, we need, we need to do it. This is a small token, quite frankly, and it, I don't know, they'll keep their doors open. But at the same point in time, we've charged them for a license fee that we're not letting them use.
Jim? It's my belief that they've been locked down nearly six months. Weren't they locked down in March, April and May?
I think they were.
Yep. Now another three months?
And and again, I, Jim, that's what I'm saying. I think our, I think our, we as a board can elect to to do whatever we want to give those people relief on those fees.
I agree 100%.
So Mr. Chair and Commissioners each, so if there's reduction or if there's a, yeah, a reduction or whatever we want to call it in what their fees are, then each individual board would have to make that up in the program area. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, and we fully, I get that. That's our responsibility.
Rebate from us.
Right.
But I don't know where the CHB becomes involved in this now. Do we need a meeting or not? I mean, I think the the agenda item is to call a special meeting for the CHB board. But is that going to be necessary? I mean, I don't know what the other counties want to do. I mean, it looks to me like our feeling is more like we can handle this ourselves and just give it back accordingly. I mean, this information is necessary, which you gave us.
My my point, Commissioner Gross, is that even if the community health board goes along with it, and all member counties go along with it, the funds still ultimately have to come from the counties. The community health board isn't going to be able to write those checks.
Yep, you're right.
That's my point. So so I don't know how this works. And I understand you got this, we have this agreement thing and any any waiver of fees, you know, you know, so maybe it, you know, maybe it would be good to to talk to the community health board and just tell them what, I don't think we, I think we should tell them what we're going to do, as as opposed to, you know, and then and then might, hopefully, the other the other counties would go along with that and do the same thing for their businesses, but.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I think just to kind of follow up on Commissioner Mojo's comments earlier, I did have correspondence with Otter Tail County. They're very, I mean, they're, they share many of the same concerns that this board shares. And I think the idea of what we're trying to do in bringing forward a meeting is that spirit of collaboration in 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 providing that consistency, consistent message. Again, I I think that in the discussions that I've had, I think at least from Otter Tail's perspective as the kind of the larger larger group, they're certainly open to this and are watching. They don't have board today, but but certainly wanted to 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 have conversations about about the direction that this board wants to go. So I think they would, they would be supportive of the of the discussions that you are having.
Well, I, and I agree with that. I've talked with commissioners from Otter Tail County and I'm sure they're interested in what we're doing. But the fact of the matter is, and the reason I say, well, again, the community health board, it's about a document and what we agreed to in a document in terms of establishing how we establish fees. I I get that piece of it, but but what we decide on, and I'm going to say it again, what we decide on and what, even if all of us decide on it, it it's going to fall back on the counties to supplement the dollars that we're paying out. It's it's going to happen regardless, so. And I want this done now. I don't want to wait too long.
Well, Kathy, how long? Do you think it would take for the public health board to have that special meeting? Because you need every county board to, do you need every county board to request it? Or just one county board can request it and then they'll meet?
Sure, one county board could request it. So if we get a request from this board, then we can hold the meeting. So it's a commissioner from each of those counties and then the public health directors. So we could meet and then have Kent there as well to talk about the details of that program. So anything that affects the fees that were already stated, whether it's reimbursement or still needs to go through that community health board as we understand it.
And then you would need that message to go to every single county board. And then you'd need each county board to agree to an MOU, right? To allow, I mean, allow what are our assets. So I, our point is that this, while it's a minute number for some businesses, you know, the time that it will take to happen.
Well, each, we, and of course, we'd hold a Teams or a Zoom meeting. So that would be relatively easy to set up fairly quickly. And then each commissioner is would be tasked to bring back to their board the message. So that's what each commissioner on that CHB is tasked to do.
And my question still is, if we're not really saying we're refunding fees, what's the purpose of the meeting? So I don't know. I mean, I realize it's according to what the fees are, but we're not refunding the fees. We're just giving them, we're just using it as a gauge to give money back to the businesses.
Yeah, Commissioner, yeah, Mr. Chair, that it's it's exactly right, the way you put it. If we're if we're not saying we're taking fees back.
And we're not taking any money away from the CHB.
We're just saying the county is willing to provide this much money to you based on what you would.
And we're just asking.
Paying, you're not really taking fees out of this budget.
Well, we're just asking you how much money did you, they pay you?
But Commissioner Gross and Kathy, we we do need to be careful because I do want to call it exactly what it is. I want to call it a return on fees that were based on being open, you know, and you couldn't be. And because if 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 we if we call it something else, then you, then that can get into having conflict, potential conflict with some of the other cares dollars and money we want to do for businesses in a different way. So this this is over and above what what we want to do with the other cares money. So I do want expressly call it a return on on license fees because that's what it is. That's what I, that's what I think it should be. They were closed. Now, one other thing too, and if you want to go to the community health board, I'm fine with that. I just don't want this to take months to do. But I do think, and I want to go to Commissioner Haney, your comment, that I think we should, we should go back and we should determine how many months were these particular businesses forced to be closed? And that can help us determine what portion of a 12-month thing we want to reimburse them for those.
These are yearly fees, aren't they, Kathy?
These.
Is this for the whole year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I I think part of the problem is, one, we don't know how much longer the governor will have this executive order on these businesses. So it's it's tricky. I would today, if it were an option, vote to waive at least three months, refund at least three months. At this point, I would, I would hope we could convince that other board to go up to six months. I certainly feel that that is justified for the the pain that these businesses had, have had. But I am concerned that the time that it will take for this to happen. I I see on the agenda, it says, discuss potential adjustment of 2021 licensing fees. And I think that's that's part of the issue is the wording, is it a refund? Is it waiving? Is it adjusting? But I agree, I think Clay County should have the authority to do whatever they want with Clay County businesses in terms of waiving or refunding.
And and one of the ways, Commissioner Mojo, that that maybe, you know, when you want to do that, maybe we could talk about adjusting 2020 slash 2021 fees. So we can take a combination of, you know, so we're, we might be reimbursing them for January of 2021 right now, plus the months that they were closed in 2020. And and again, so if there's six months worth there, that would be one half of the fees returned. That's, you know, that's kind of, so I, maybe, Commissioner Mojo, maybe that could help with that is to say, we wanted, our adjustment wants to be a combination of the two years. And it may have to be looked at again down the road if 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 they're going to be closed another five months in 2021, heaven forbid, but if that happens, it's, you know.
We also have to look at a thing, I think, for the ones that were open, they could only be open 25% or 50%. So do you want to refund fees for those two?
Well, they're paying taxes 100%.
That's right.
That's, I think, the biggest argument is that.
Well, but but I think I think the numbers that we have here are all license fees.
Right, but if.
You know, aren't they, they're they're not, they're not, these aren't just the ones that are closed. These are all license fees, so.
Right.
You know, and and like I said, I I think all of them, even when they were open, they were open at 25 or 50% capacity. It was, I, this, this is a small amount the county can help out with, I think. And in addition to what we've been doing in other ways, and we need to do it.
I think it's not a lot significant that we make a statement to this.
Yeah.
I can question this now. I mean, do we want to go through the CHB board? Do they want to just do it on our own, so?
Well, I I don't, you know, Commissioner Mojo will think, I think, that's okay. I mean, we can go to them and and do that, but what happens if they don't agree? I'm I'm going to do it anyway.
Oh, that's just it, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Campbell and Mr. Chair, you know, if you if you relate it as the equivalent of the fees versus taking it out of the direct fees, still the same, you're making the same statement. You're you're the equivalent of their fees. Now, keep in mind, these fees also include the school districts because they're licensed for their program. There's just a whole lot of, this this isn't just some restaurants. It's every, every organization that provides that service. So it includes school districts and there's many others, Kent, correct?
I think we'd have to work with the board to see who's all involved in this. But I think it's still determined by a.
I think maybe to make the point, Mr. Chair, I think from the cares committee perspective, it was the idea of giving the opportunity for the CHB to make that same gesture that we're already talking about. I think today, the board could, just as they've stated here, ask for a community health board to meet, to look to make an adjustment, to see if all of the different counties want to do that. If they choose not to, this board, both the cares committee could still meet, make a motion or or come out of that committee to say what they want to do. Again, whether it's 500 dollars per business or whatever that amount is per business, or if it's 20,000 that we're going to look to give them depending on, but, and part of that including fees. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different options. I think ultimately, the discussion, I think, out of the cares committee was to try to adjust or reimburse. And so I don't even know if that needs to be made here today. I think the idea was to allow the the community health board to meet, to make their position known to us, give them the ability to see if they join us in what we see. So I think that's what we should look at as far as a motion today, of whether we want to allow that board to meet, see what they want to do, what their position is, and then come back. And again, if they didn't choose to do that because of different positions and costs, maybe to different counties, that maybe, I don't know what that board would ultimately say, but I think allowing the the board to meet, to see what their position is, and then come back to this board after that would be the best thing.
I just don't see where we're taking any money away from the board, so.
Right. Mr. Chair, I, just to move this along, I, I respect what you're saying. And I I would move that we ask the community health board to have an emergency meeting to discuss the waiver of of fees based on a timeline of closure that's been done at the state level, right? That's where this all came down from. And I would like to have a response, at least to a timeline, at our next meeting. So in other words, you know, I'm I'm saying, let's do a, let's request it. But we want to hear back in a week when that's going to happen. That's my motion.
Second. We got a motion by Kevin, second by Jim, to have the meeting and get a timeline on it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any further questions, Kathy, as far as what we plan on doing? You're looking to decide, like, can you do?
Well, Kent is, this is his program area, so I reference him.
No, I'd just like to say, I think we're all after the same thing here, just how to get there. And, you know, with our delegation agreement with the state and our CHB, the way things are structured, policy and procedure, this is the best way to go. And I think we all agree that everyone in each county involved here is looking for the same thing, so.
Ultimately, I'm talking about Clay County money that would be spent regardless.
It doesn't come out of your paycheck, Kathy.
Good, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're going to be setting up a meeting with like, with the PH?
I'll do that right after this, as soon as I can.
Dang. Okay, next thing we got, a request to authorize a amendment to contract with Burns and McDonald for finally sign work of the resource recovery campus. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Come before you, it's been a long time. We are finally at the time where we're actually going to be able to turn some dirt at some point in time. It seems like it's been countless trips down to the Twin Cities, twisting arms, drinking coffee, eating pie to try and convince some legislators to do the right thing. What I come for before you with today is it's two parts. The first part is final design of the, final drawings, actually, of the the resource recovery campus out there. It's been about three years since we've looked at the the project. So we're going to take another look and make sure it's exactly what we want. As I mentioned in the the board item, the costs for the services are 216,000 dollars. But approximately 70% of those amount will be covered by the state grant. We have, still have 164,000 dollars left from the first state grant, and we can use it towards this. So with that, I'll stand to answer any questions you may have. I might point out that we did go to SWAC Solid Waste Advisory Committee and talked about it. They're aware of this. We also talked to Commissioner Wayland, Commissioner Campbell, and they're familiar with what's happening. And the contract has also been reviewed by the county attorney for form and substance. So with that, as I mentioned, I stand to answer any questions.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Kirk, what was the amount that we spent more than three years ago in the design? Kirk, what was the amount that we spent more than three years ago in the design?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, the, the overall cost was about $240,000.
And that's what's reflected here? 16 or a little more?
Yeah, a little more than that.
Okay.
There are going to be some changes. We already know there are going to be some changes. One of the changes we're going to be making, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, one of the changes we are going to be making is we're going to be having a separate drop-off area for the citizens with trailers. One of the things that we did not, you know, consider at the time was to have that, and so we're, we're going to add that in an area there. The other thing that, the other change that we know we're going to have is we're going to separate the, the offices from the transfer station as well, and hopefully by doing that, alleviate some kind of order transfer from the transfer station into the offices. So those two things we know we're going to be changing. Anything else? I don't think...
So, the original design was the offices were going to be in the middle. Is that changing now?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's not going to change. Essentially, the only thing that's going to change is there's going to be a space in between the transfer station and the offices.
Like, like a, what kind of space?
Mr. Chairman, there'll be just a, almost like a walkway, is, is essentially what it'll be.
It's all enclosed.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that part, it will be enclosed, but it'll be separate from the, the transfer station. So the transfer station will be one building, and the offices will be a separate building, and there'll be a space in between. Before, they basically shared a wall, and we...
Okay, so it, so it's going to be two separate buildings?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, that's true.
Okay, so that's, that's something brand new to me there.
Well, maybe, I, I think we've talked about it, but, Mr. Chairman, I might be wrong.
The drawing showed it all, one building, but, I, I, we can...
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's one of the reasons we're going to redo the drawings, is because the drawings all had it as one, one, one building, so.
Would that increase the cost of the building, do that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I don't, I do not believe so. That's, that's one of the other reasons we're going to be having these folks do the, the final design, is we're going to get, we, we had an original bid approximately three years ago, $14.5 million, and we're going to have them take another look and give us another idea of what their estimated cost is going to be.
Okay. I just look at two outside walls, going to cost more than one.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that's what's a little surprising, apparently, but we can will...
That's okay, that's something we need to look at. Okay, so...
I, I do want to point out, too, that, that what we're talking about here today is different than when, when we go to select a construction manager at risk. This is, that, that's not what we're doing here today, right? So that's, just so the board's aware of that, that... So this is kind of, to give you an example, this, this is similar to what we did with Klein-McCarthy on our other projects, as opposed to construction engineers.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the contract revision.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant, to request to authorize the amendment to the contract with Burns. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The, the second item, it was the item that Kevin was just speaking to, and that's to retain Burns and McDonald for the construction manager services for the resource recovery campus. And their fee will be 3% of the total construction cost, not to exceed $500,000. And the 3% represents what, maybe I should back up a little. As, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, this is going to be very, very similar to what you did with the jail and the LEC, where you have an owner representative, which was the architect, that was Klein at that particular time, will oversee the, the work of the, the contractor, and that was a construction engineer. And so in that particular case, Klein, their fee was 4% of the total capital cost, or of, of the project, and in this particular case, it's only 3%, so I think we got a little better deal. I did put a cap on that of $500,000, just to try and hold the cost down. I'm, I am a little concerned, and I've shared the, the concern with Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell. We've got two major projects going on in the, the area this next year with the diversion and with the Amazon project, and I'm really concerned of what's going to happen with cost of material and labor both, so, but I did put a, a price on that. So with that, I'm asking to have the board approve the request for, have Burns and Mac as the construction engineer, or, I'm sorry, construction manager.
Second. We've got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant, to approve the retention of Burns and Mordi, Burns and McDonald, excuse me, for construction manager services.
And, and again, Mr. Chair, for discussion. So again, we still, we still haven't determined who will get the contract, the actual construction contract, and that, that will still be a separate deal. And that's where we'd get, if we, if we decided to go with that risk, that's where we'd get the not to exceed...
Well, that's what I've just, that was my question now, I was just going, we just approved $216,000 for Burns and Mordi, and I was saying not to exceed $500,000. Is that 216 part of this 500?
Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman, no, that's not. That's a separate item. The, the, the first item was just for the final drawing, to look at the final drawing. The second part is just for the construction management.
But it's 3% of the fee not to exceed $500,000.
Right, I mean, I, I was just wondering whether 216 was part of that.
No, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One last thing, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to walk through the, the timeline here, so folks kind of know what is going to be happening. As we talked about, Burns and Mac will be providing the final drawings. We want to have that done by the first of, or I'm sorry, by the 21st of January of 2021. At the same time, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, we want to go out for a contractor to determine who's going to be doing the actual construction. I've had several contractors contact me already, so I think we're going to get a pretty good competitive bid. But the request for qualifications will be going out the 21st of January as well. We hope to do the contract interview. We'll give them a month to put together their proposal. We hope to do the contractor interview the 22nd of February, and select a contractor probably the following week, first week of the March. We also have the, the new grant with the PCA, that's a $7.5 million grant. We've already submitted a preliminary grant request to them. We hope to finalize the PCA grant by the, the 1st of March as well. One thing I should point out, and this is one thing that Commissioner Campbell was wondering about, we can spend our own money, our contribution towards the, the grant before the grant is approved. They just changed that this year, so I'm pretty happy that that happened, because that would give us a, a good start. We, we're going to have to bond for some of the project, and so I hope to be able to have that done by the 19th of March. I think that there may be some other things that could be folded into the, the bonding, perhaps, and I think that that's a discussion that Lori and Steve and Kevin and yourselves will have to be talking about, so. On that, I hope to begin construction at the, the site by April 15th. Hopefully, the frost will be out of the ground, and we'll be done with blizzards, and we can get started on that fairly quickly. And then it, it'll take about a year, year and a half, for the construction to be completed, and that'll be done July 15th, 2022. So that's kind of, it's, it's an aggressive time schedule. I'm, I'm fairly aggressive, as you all know. I get a little impatient at times, but I think it's realistic, so hopefully we can accommodate that.
Mr. Chair. So when we, just a little discussion regarding the bonding, when we talked about that, you know, there's, there still is some work to be done on, on how the operations is going to be, that, that hasn't been completely determined yet between the county and the city. But one of the things that we did ask for was to get a complete list of capital items that would, would be needed. For example, whether it's additional trailers...
Transfer trailers.
Transfer trailers that you had, because they're going to load differently than what the city currently has, whether there's another tractor needed, and those types of things. So what we'll be able to do then is incorporate those items into the bond to help relieve stresses in other, in other areas of our finances, so. So that plan is also going into place, so it's going to be more than just our share of the facility itself that we'd be looking at these bond dollars for.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is going to be quite a project. I mean, obviously, you guys have been through it here with the, the jail and the LEC, but this is going to be a fairly major project, so it'll be, it'll be fun, it'll be interesting.
Thank you, Kirk.
With that, I'd just like to say, you know, I, I know this isn't probably appropriate, but I'm going to do it anyway. I, I, this is not my first board meeting that I've ever had. I have worked with elected officials quite a while over the years, and I just want to thank Grant and Jim for serving the community. I am a member, or I am a resident of Clay County, and I think the folks in Clay County sometimes don't recognize what you, y'all do. I certainly do, and I, I really appreciate all you've done, not only for solid waste, but everything, so thank you very much, and I wish you the best in the future. Thank you.
Okay, the highway department, I guess, is...
They're in the hallway.
Aaron?
They're right there.
Oh, there we go. There come our men, Mr. Overbow and Justin. Good morning, Dave. Let's go ahead with your project here. We've got a couple items that we're going to discuss right now. The first one is the approval of the right-of-way appraisal.
Correct. So this ties on to that shared project we have with the city of Glendon with regard to the LPP grant for trying to correct and increase turn lane space in Glendon. Justin's been working with the city engineer. We have got an appraisal here for real estate work from Gary Bach of GE Bach Real Estate LLC. The last time we worked with Mr. Bach was when, on County Road 7, do you remember, Commissioner Campbell, when we made that little curve there, and we had a little condemnation case there? And I wonder if Mr. Bach wasn't the city appraiser at the time for the city of Morhead, but very, very good. I remember, and this is many, many years ago, but I'll never forget, that just, he was just really, really good at what he did. When Justin brought this to me, I was pretty excited to see that. I think we're in good hands. I think we're going to, we're going to need a solid appraisal for this project that we're working on. And I guess I would, you know, and the price was really good for, I know, I know it's only one parcel that we're working on, but it looks like the, is it anticipated fee, of course, that's, if we have to go further in, like, let's say we do have a hard time getting this parcel, there could be additional costs, but to get the appraisal book for this one parcel, looks like it's $2,500, and that'll be split 50/50 between the city and the county.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenny, to approve the, the project appraisal. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the MOU with the city of Holly for reconstruction project on County 33.
All right, we, we've talked about this a couple different times at our highway committee, and we did also have a short little sit-down with a couple of city council members from city Holly. And we just, when we put the MOU together, the project, the limits and the exact scope changed just a little bit. Initially, they were looking at having a large, like, the 10-foot Heartland Trail would be kind of centered on part of the existing roadbed. The existing road in this area is, is really, really wide, I think it's like 48 feet right now. It's wider than it really needs to be to accommodate even driving lanes and parking. So the, their idea amongst the city was to skinny it up a little bit, put the trail on there. They've since kind of changed their mind a little bit on the trail, and rather than having five-foot sidewalk, they're going to look at having like a seven-foot sidewalk that could accommodate a future Heartland Trail at some time. And they also are liking to have maybe enough room to park cars on both sides of the road, so it would be more like a 40-foot wide roadway. And to accommodate that, we changed our MOU just a little bit. The cost splits didn't change, as we took a look at the county share. The way that works, the county participates on these projects and the municipalities for driving lanes only, and then outside of driving lanes, the city participates on that share of the roadway. And that's the way we did it right out here on 11th Street with city of Morhead. We did it the same way with Barnesville, and we did a reconstruct on Front Street, and we did the exact same way with the city of Glendon on Park Avenue. So we took a look at the cost to repair, or more doing a mill and overlay, because the roadway is not in terrible shape, County Road 33, but there's water and sewer that's, you know, it's got water main breaks, and it's, it's aging, and it needs to be replaced, and it complements their citywide project that they are doing. It's a phase-three project in the city of Holly, so our share of the project to do a reconstruct would be 30%, and the city's share would be 70%. And this would be roadway items only, and then the way, the rest of the MOU. So very, very little changed on our MOU, except for some language that describes that there is parking on both sides of the road. Sidewalk is typically a 50/50 split with the city and the county. Storm sewer is typically a 50/50 split between cities and counties, so.
Mr. Chair, not often that we get a city council member here, though, too. Sean, does this meet the agreements that Holly is under the understanding of? Okay.
Okay, my question is, I guess we should probably vote where we want to do this now, first, before we go into this stuff.
Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second. We've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, to approve the request for the new memorandum of understanding. My question is, does this rescind the old one?
No.
Or do we have to rescind it?
It just amends it.
It just amended. Okay. Okay, yeah, it says, why not read what it says?
So it's got a date on the front, so then we will be, use the most current dated one.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the last thing, it's advertised for a mill and overlay project on County 23.
Yeah, Justin and our staff have been working really hard, looking at 2021 projects, and I'm excited, because this is one of my favorite projects, I'm really looking forward to it. I think this road needs a mill and overlay. This is the road that goes to the landfill. We're just going to, and right now, it's got the drop shoulders, so the center 24 is raised a little bit, and we, we, this is almost identical to what we did north of Holly on County Road 33. We mill off that center 24, and then we build up the entire roadway, so there's no more drop shoulders. They're really hard to plow. If you ever go off, you kind of go down and back up, so it's a, it's a concept that they did in the 70s that we're trying to eliminate them. I think we still have a couple areas. There's one down by Barnesville that remains, and maybe just north of Dilworth on County Road 9 also has drop shoulders, but I'm excited to get moving on this, and we'll see how the asphalt prices turn out. We would look at a proposed bid letting date of February 9th, because we have to advertise three, three weeks in a row, and then the bid letting cannot be sooner than 10 days from the last ad date, so it takes about a month to advertise.
Was this part of our five-year?
Yeah, exactly, and our engineers' estimate turned out within about $5,000 of what's listed on the five-year plan. In fact, I think we're just a little under. I think the five-year plan has it listed at $815,000, and our estimate is about $810, so we're, we're right in line, which is really good. You hate to have your estimate get way higher.
Mr. Chair, are, are you anticipating any detours for this, or are you going to just keep it open?
It'll be open to traffic.
Just like one lane?
A pilot car, yeah.
Pilot car?
Yep.
Okay. I move approval.
Second. Yeah, a motion by Kevin, second by Grant, to approve the advertisement mill and overlay for County 23. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion passes. With that, we'll go into committee reports. Jenny, you want to start us out today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended the CARES Act meeting. We're in the process of working through the new dollars that were allocated from the Minnesota Legislature, and trying to get the business relief to those that are affected as quickly as possible. And as you know, we talked about the licensing, licensing fees earlier, so we'll see what we're able to work through that. We do have a meeting with representatives from all the cities in Clay County after this meeting to work through it as well. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting. Good updates in terms of the audit committee. The board did decide to go with a new company for their audit for the next three years. The board did decide to go with a new company for their audit for the next three years, so that was approved and discussed. And talked a little bit about how they were, have been able to keep their margins fairly similar to last year. That, as you know, is, is because there were some significant changes to programming as soon as the COVID pandemic started. So good news that they have been able to address there. They were able to secure another $36,000 in coronavirus relief funds, and then we discussed survey and employee concerns. There was an update from the collaboratives, the Clay County Collaborative. Carolyn Sternad has given a June 1st date for her retirement. That will be definitely a well-earned retirement. She served, served us very well. That concludes my reports, but if I may, Mr. Chair, just in reflecting on what 2020 has been like for all of us, it's definitely been a challenge in terms of personal concerns and losses, as Kevin has unfortunately experienced, along with a lot of other people in our community. But I just, as a member of this commission, really want to extend my gratitude to our staff for meeting the challenge of what our service needs have been in the last year. Certainly, it has been a workflow that's been different than anything any of us have ever seen, and I think that our staff have really gone above and beyond to meet the needs of the residents. I have really not had many complaints from residents in terms of their needs being disrupted through this, and that, the only reason that is, is because our staff is amazing and goes above and beyond. So I'm, I may, if it's appropriate, request, if it's this board's intention, for our administrator to send a letter of support and gratitude to our employees at the wrap-up of 2020. I certainly feel everyone has, has earned their stripes, and I think it's important that this board show that gratitude as well. So I would make a motion to direct our administrator to send a letter to staff in the next couple days from this board to show our gratitude.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin, send a, send a letter. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Kevin?
I had also the CARES meeting on the 22nd, which Commissioner Mojo has talked about. Then yesterday, yesterday afternoon, I was on a special, special meeting of the MCIT Board regarding Prairie Lakes and three other, regarding the insurance. And as I talked about, we were down to the 12th hour of the 12th month. As of yesterday, we had no insurance on that facility starting January 1. So, so, you know, it's cutting it a little close. But they did end up getting two proposals, or one was an actual quote, and the other one was a proposal. And so the, the first one is the one that the board ultimately went with right now, and what that will do is it'll increase Prairie Lakes' insurance number by, it's going to go from $480,000 to $530,000 premium for 2021. Part of this, during part of this process, is we, we asked about, and keep in mind now, that wasn't, wasn't long ago, that, that number was $80,000. I think it was just two years ago that, that amount was $80,000 a year, and it went to four, up to 480 for 20, we had budgeted 480 for 2021. But there was, there's another possibility out there, and they couldn't give a final premium amount. So the total premium on, on the one that they accepted was like $2.5 million. So, but there's another proposal out there that has a higher deductible, of which our, our Prairie Lakes Board has been talking about and maybe had some interest in, that where we could maybe do some self-insuring by having a higher deductible. And, and that one requires each facility to have a engineering audit, because they, before they approve the insurance, they want to make sure that, it's kind of like your homeowners, when they want to know, is it made out of wood? Is it made out of brick? And that type of thing. So that's what they're looking for there, to, to see what kind of shape these, these facilities are in. But anyway, that one, based on the anticipation that all these facilities would be in good shape, that number, that number would drop to like $320,000. And that would be with a hundred, a hundred to $250,000 deductible. Well, if you do the math, you know, the premium savings would cover that deductible if you did have a loss. So, so the unfortunate thing is, is, is the one that they chose now, it's an up, it's an upfront load on the premium. And so it might be six months. So they, what they did is they approved it with the idea in mind that in six months, we would go to that other plan, because after 2021, MCIT says they're done. They won't no longer even offer the insurance. So that's it. That's, at least we got insurance. And that concludes my report.
That was a big thing, Alfred, with MCIT. You, that was it for your report?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll give my report, because I have had no meetings. And with that, we'll go on to the final report from Jim. I have no meeting yet. Grant, there's...
No meetings for me either, so.
Okay. All right, with that, we're going to our recognition of our...
You guys were slacking a little bit.
Administrator report?
Oh, Steve, I guess your report. You're here, you're here, too? Thought you left, okay.
That's what they're here for. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last Tuesday, I participated in the CARES meeting that's been addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Mojo. That afternoon, I reached out to representatives from our different cities and having discussions about our business relief plan, spoke mostly specifically to the people who were involved in our, our Phase 1 and 2 of business relief. On the 23rd, I participated in a Zoom meeting put on by MACA and AMC. I heard from Matt Hilgert and Julie, Julie Ring in, in regards to the business relief package from the legislature, and there were some counties that shared the frameworks that they've been working on, and we also broke into small groups. On the 23rd, met with Joe on a series of campus issues and, at the new government center, and also had correspondence, as we spoke earlier, with, with Otter Tail County in regards to our, our topic on, on licensing fees. On the 28th, again, met with Joe, Kathy McCain, Darren, and we prepped for a business relief meeting. Just would want to note quickly for, for our board, the, we did have, in purchasing the RDO building, which is now our new Clay County Government Center, we had a lease agreement that had them in, in the, in the building up until January 15th. They have, they have left the building, and as of yesterday, GIS has begun to move in, into that area. And so we'll have further information with other departments as they become available. We are doing a walkthrough with RDO this afternoon, just as a final, final inspection. Yesterday afternoon, I did send in a certification document to the Department of Revenue requesting the, the $1.2 million in business relief. They've indicated that we should receive those funds in two to three business days. And then lastly, we just note that next week, we have Oath of Office. That will, that will happen 15 minutes prior to our, our board meeting at 8:30. And that concludes my report.
At this time, also, most of you probably weren't here, but we just made a motion to thank all you people. A lot of our supervisors are here right now in the building, in the room, excuse me. They're not on camera, we should probably put them on camera, but to you people that are here right now, thank you so much for this year. It was a tough one. Thank you very much.
I wonder, could, could you unmute yourself, or could you mute yourself, Kevin? There's a lot of backflow coming.
Kevin, did you want to say something? Casenberg. Kevin, did you have something you wanted to say?
It's fine.
You might want to refer to, which Kevin?
Kevin Casenberg. Excuse me.
He's muted.
Click the mute button off.
Thanks, Frank. I just wanted to say, too, that, you know, though the SWCD staff are not county employees, I think sometimes we feel like we are, as we've got a great working relationship with many of the department heads, and to some degree or another, we work more closely with a lot of your staff. So I guess I would want to thank you on behalf of the SWCD Board and our staff that, for your full board's cooperation and your continued support of our SWCD office, a special thank you to Commissioners Wayland and Haney for your years of service to Clay County. That's something to, to be, I guess, be well-recognized for and a feather in your hats. Commissioner Haney, we will miss your, your attendance at our board meetings, as you're the county's alternate representative to our board, and you always bring good updates to our, our board and what's going on at the, at the county level. We appreciate that. And remember, you're always invited to our, to attend our board meetings, and we still have hopes that we will get a song or two out of you sometime down the road, so best wishes to both of you. Thank you.
A song.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, with that, we'll go into our recognition of our commissioners, retiring commissioners.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners, and then a final good morning to Commissioner Haney, Commissioner Wayland. Really want to admit, I don't think we've been looking forward to this day since you decided that you guys had needed, needed more Tuesdays off. And so, but, but we are here today, and, and, you know, I think oftentimes, to an untrained eye, somebody who just pops in for a board meeting, they may look and say, hey, that, that commissioner job is, is a pretty good gig. Maybe they don't understand that what you guys do here on a daily basis is, is really the culmination of work that, that happens over a period of time. And what you do is, is really a calling. They don't see necessarily when you guys are, are coming to a committee meeting at 7:00 AM and your last one finishes up at 9:00 PM. They don't see those, those calls that you happily take from your constituents throughout the, throughout the week, sharing their concerns, and, and sometimes maybe those concerns aren't, they're not happy with you. But, but taking, and nor do they think about the times where, you know, you're thinking about those challenging decisions that this board struggles with. And so you guys have taken the role, this role with, with great dedication and professionalism. You, based on that effort, you've really made the job look easy. It's not an easy role, and so we thank you for that. And on behalf of the 17 department heads and this, and our employees here at Clay County, really want to shake, thank you for sharing your time and your energies. You guys are excellent examples of steward leadership with, with Commissioner Haney, not just on the, on the commission, but also in these years in the council, and with Commissioner Wayland and his 31 years of service servicing the citizens of, of Morhead through the Police Department and his three terms here. Just an, just an excellent, excellent resource for us. And, and so we, we want to thank you for all that and wish you best of luck in, in your, in your future path. So thank you. There are a number of people here, I think commissioners-wise, that may have a few, and we also have some people in the public here that, our department heads that may want to also share some sentiments.
Anyone commissioned, go ahead.
Well, yeah, you kind of described what we can, as commissioners, can go through. I have to say that when you come on as a commissioner, you don't, you don't come on here to make friends. Sometimes you do, and sometimes you lose some friends, right? We, we've experienced that, but I'm just going to be glad to be able to call you friends. Thank you.
Kevin? Thank you, too. I know, well, Jim came on after me, but Grant, you were here when I came on, and your help really, you know, your guidance and stuff like that really helped me out, because I remember Dr. Keith Langs had asked, you know, if he had any words of advice to me, and he said, first two years, keep your mouth shut, so. That was his, but, no, he really gave me a lot of good guidance and all, and it was good, it was just good, good to know you and Jim. It's good to make acquaintance with you guys. Thank you very much. So do we have anybody out there that wants to come forward?
I'm, I might speak really quick. That's fine. I'm really going to miss you both. Of course, I'm emotional. Why am I always emotional? When I came on the board, Grant was already on the board, and Grant very quickly was a very good friend. He was also a leader that showed me how you can really disagree with someone, but still in the end of the day, work together to get something done. And that's, I think, the epitome of who Grant is. He's always working to find the best solution for as many people involved, and I'm really thankful that I had the opportunity to work with you and Chimmy. Boy, we've had fun. And I, I think maybe I can take the credit for nudging you a little bit to leave the Morhead City Council and come work at Clay County, for the citizens of Clay County, and I, and I, too, have, have really learned a lot from you in terms of passionate leadership and, and conviction and everything that you do. And we will miss you. We will miss your, the laughs that we have together. We will also miss the, the friendship at this table, but I know that that goes on into the community. I, I think what's been great about serving in this capacity is that you, you really develop friendships with folks from all different types of what life, people that maybe you wouldn't have, have had the opportunity to get to know otherwise, and so I'm, I'm grateful for the time that we've had together on this board and excited for the future endeavors. Both Marcia and Bonnie are both people that I've been fortunate to get to know because of your service as well, and, boy, they are saints putting up with you guys.
I just want to follow up. So you two are going to leave a legacy in, in your own ways at the county level, and I, you know, both of you were, worked hard on, on probably one of the largest capital improvement project that this county ever did. Your, your names are rightfully so, put across the street on those facilities. And Grant, your, your special involvement on the diversion project, that's something that, years down the road, as this thing is now really moving in the right direction, you will have a permanent place in history in helping to understand how you've, we've been able to protect this community. And I want to thank you for, a lot of people don't know, he's, Grant's kind of the quiet one of the two of us that serve on that ward. But, but he, he's, as Commissioner Mojo said, he's very effective, and he's been very effective in 12 years. And thank you for your 12 years, and Jim, thank you for your four years. It's been a pleasure to have your insight into, into different things.
Okay, one more chance for out there. There we go, Mark. Thank you.
Hi. Oh.
Somebody's online.
Yeah. Would you like to go first? If I could, maybe just...
Absolutely.
Well, I think somebody's trying to talk.
There, there is, well, we could, we could go, somebody who's, who we were going to have last, but certainly not least, he'll be the one to tell you. We have Brian Berg on the, on the telephone here, and so he would, he'd like to say a few words.
Okay, Brian, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought it was quiet there for a minute, so I was going to jump in. I didn't know there was a certain order there. I thought all the commissioners left. But good morning, Mr. Chair, and, and other members of this distinguished board, Administrator Larson, and also Ms. Eck. It's just, it's just so great to talk to all of you again today. It's, it's been a, it's been a few years, and frankly, I miss it a, a great deal. But I don't want to take a lot of time here, but I did want to take this opportunity to, to thank the two commissioners that are retiring, Commissioner Wayland and Haney. They have served with distinction, and, and we really appreciate that. Of course, the one that I, I guess led me to the job of serving as administrator for eight years was, was Commissioner Wayland, and I, I guess I will always hold a special place in my heart for, for Grant. You know, he, he's really, he has really served our country and the community well. And it hadn't been mentioned today, but, and, and I know, Mr. Chair, you were in the Army as well. well, but Grant is the one retiring today here, and I guess I look at his service as we're the same age and Grant and I, and serving our nation as an Army veteran in Vietnam during that time period as a police officer, we share that in our background as well. And serving, I think it was 27 years as Chief of Police, and now 12 years as County Commissioner for Clay County, he has a real proud record to uphold. And I will say that Commissioner Wayland is a true leader. His actions speak much louder than his words. He is so trustworthy, reliable. He's a deep thinker and does what is right at the end of the day. He has accomplished much during his 12 years, and working with and through other people is a true test of a good leader in accomplishing those tasks. And that's where that's where he was. So I guess I just I enjoyed working. It extended my career up until 67 and a half, and then I felt it was time to do other things and mostly fish and travel and things like that. But I just want to thank Commissioner Wayland for his support, his leadership, his accomplishments, and his dedication to public service. And good luck in God's feet.
Thank you, Brian. I can't believe I have to put up with you on my last day. That's.
Well, you do, and you roll after that, too.
Yeah. Thank you for those nice words there, Mr. Berg. Nice to hear your voice again.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark's going to go next. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Especially thank you, Grant and Jim. We've obviously heard a lot of things about you today and a lot of the work that you have done in our area, and it's very much appreciated. I echo all the statements that everything has been said here today, but one of the things and one of the things that you haven't been described yet is servant leaders, and you are truly servant leaders to our area. And we do appreciate everything you have done for Clay County over the past four years and 12 years, respectively. So for that, I'd like to present each of you with a plaque for your leadership and for your support to the Sheriff's Office and as well just Clay County as a whole. I'll read the plaque here and what it says. This plaque is going to be presented to Jim Haney, Clay County Commissioner, District One. It's in recognition and sincere appreciation of your four years of dedicated service to the residents of Clay County and your support of the Sheriff's Office. I've known you several years, going back to my time as a police explorer. I remember you at my.
And that tells you how old I am, doesn't it?
It tells you how old I've gotten. But again, this is presented to Grant Wayland, Clay County Commissioner, District Five. It's in recognition and sincere appreciation of your 12 years of dedicated service to the residents of Clay County and your support of the Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, I think I wish you the best in your next chapter.
Thank you. Any else out there before we go to Steve? Don't be scared. Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on behalf of this commission and again, the employees of Clay County, we'd like to provide both Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Haney a little momentum, kind of a highlight, highlighting the service that they provided over the years as Commissioner. And again, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
I think he wants to get a picture of you. No, of you, I'm giving.
And Mr. Chair, as many of you can attest, that commissioners really don't serve alone. Now, there's another half in many cases that are getting to experience a lot of things as you do. And whether it's, you know, a meal by themselves because your committee meetings went longer, whether it's because your committee meeting didn't go long enough and they had to rehash the meeting with you. Bonnie and Marcia have played an important role. And so I just want to provide a small token to them and appreciation of sharing the time and talents with us.
So is my turn now, Steve?
I'll do.
So I have to say, you know, for me, the old adage holds true, time flies when you're having fun. So it's amazing that 12 years has gone by. But I'll tell you, you know, it's for me, because of all the outstanding staff in every department in Clay County, it's been easy being a county commissioner. It really has. You know, it's been easy because I've had the good fortune to work with three great county administrators. First, VJ Sethi, and then Ryan Berg, and now Steve Larson. Everyone outstanding individual, which makes being a county commissioner easy. And having learned what I have from in other counties over the last 12 years, I mean that sincerely, it's been great. You know, and then it's been, you know, I've had the privilege to serve with so many good, you know, county commissioners in Clay County, the past ones and the present ones, is just everyone outstanding people that are doing what's right for the people of Clay County. And then I want to thank the citizens of Clay County for giving me the opportunity to do this job. It's been great, so thanks. Jim, you got any?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for being here and all the wonderful things that they've been saying. I was at a meeting, I think, when I was on the city council, and I don't recall if there's a legislative forum with the state legislators that came through town. And I think that's where I met Jenny, wasn't it? And she had her little baby with Lakin with her at that time, and she said, you've got to think about running for county commission. And then a couple of months later, I was in my office at my studio, and a couple of the current commissioners sitting at this table, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Wayland, came walking to the door, and I said, to what do I owe this honor? And the rest kind of went that course. And it was a very happy day on each occasion when that happened. And I have enjoyed being on this commission and serving the citizens of Clay County. It's been really a joy and an unbelievable year this past year as far as the staff and how they nimbly dealt with the extreme situations of the COVID-19 situation, and especially the members of the care committee, all the over and above the call of duty that they performed on behalf of our citizens in Clay County. I'm very much in awe of all of that. I thank all of you, and I thank for all your competence and your honesty and your eagerness to keep us informed about what's going on and what we need to know to take care of what's happening here in Clay County. Thank you all.
And extend your condolences to both Marcia and Bonnie that have to put up with us now and are much more ready than others. So. And with that, we adjourn.